Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. We are going to call this Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting, call Office 6 to order, and we will have the invocation by Commissioner Lang.
That's right. Most gracious heaven and father, we are proud to come before you today as always, representing and making decisions for our county. We are grateful for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us and the privilege of living in Harris County and in a free world. We ask, oh lord, that you be with us as we listen to our citizens, as we listen to each other's opinions, and then we make decisions that are best for this county. We ask, oh lord, for your continued guidance, for your protection, for your healing the sick, comforting those in sorrow, and give us your blessing as we go through our daily life. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. You'll stand and quote in the way to me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes of the regular session July 16th and the call session of July 24th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second? A second? Motion and a second. Are there any changes or any questions or any discussion on any of the items? Okay, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. The minutes are current. Um, there's a appearance of citizens. We had a Mr. Benjamin Johnson with the request of a moratorium of Section 8 of Article 5 of Zalaya ordinance, and he has withdrawn that request for moratorium. Are there any others who signed anything?
Let me jump.
Okay. Okay, we have nothing. Under old business, new business. We have a reappointment to family, the Department of Family and Children's Services, the DFAS board. The term of Lizzie Williams expired June the 30th. The DFAS board has requested, and Ms. Williams has conceded to her reappointment for another term, and that term will expire on June the 30th, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion.
Motion.
Is a motion and a second. Are there any questions or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Williams? All right, thank you. She is appointed and you see your platform. The next item is the financial statement for May of 2019, and print chat down. You're to answer any questions. Um, is there any... Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
If there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there a... Any discussion or any changes or any questions for me?
We've got one more month to go in a year on this report, and we're in great shape. The department heads are doing a great job of staying within the budget and keep it kind of running.
That's right. Our department heads have done a good job. So, all those approved? All right, financial statement approved. The next item on our agenda is the safety discount verification. In order for the county to receive a discount from ACCG on its Irma, which is property and liability, and on workers' compensation insurance premiums, the county is required to approve and submit two verification forms to ACCG. Um, the verification forms are the usual annual documents. And both these documents are safety discount verification form. The appointed ACCG IRM safety coordinator is Monty Davis and one director. And then the group self-destroyed workers' compensation is also listed on that document. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions, any comments? Okay, all those in favor? Motion. Grant application. Um, the county has an opportunity to apply for a grant from ACCG in the amount of $5,000 to provide financial assistance to the county to purchase safety-related equipment. It's requested that approval be given to apply for the grant in order to acquire four AEDs for the EMS department. The AEDs would be placed in the courthouse. There would be one there. EMS supervisor vehicles, there would be three. There is no match involved with the grant.
Do we have any AEDs? I think there's one in the community center. Do we have any others already?
Yes, we have. We have them at the red. Uh, there was an old courthouse. All we dispersed about forty of them throughout the county, all along here by our department.
Yeah, I was just hoping we were not like starting off getting them now.
No, we just all let the use of the foreflame and simple location, but the influx took a big rep. The schools all have them.
Yeah, we just went through training at school, uh, again, but you gotta do that like every couple of years. I was just making sure that we were adding to, not starting.
Right, but probably between sixty, seventy, and a good, okay, one.
That's good.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the grant application.
I'll say.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions or any discussion? Okay, all of those in favor? Motion. All right. So, the grant application to apply for the grant is approved. Um, we have a change order. It's item number seven. The water main upgrade on... Oh, wait, 2019. Um, during the September 18th meeting, the board awarded the water main upgrade on 2019 project to Crawford Grant readying pipeline with a low bid amount being $540,835.57. The funding for this project was budgeted in the Water Works Fund. The county's cost share is 60.2% of GDOT's agreed upon cost plus the cost to upgrade the pipe from six inches to eight inches. GDOT's cost share is 39.8%. While constructing this project, the contractor encountered rock. Rock was anticipated and a unit cost was obtained during the bidding process at $481.08 per linear foot. A change order is being recommended by the county's consultant, Carter Slupe, in the amount of $145,705.90. This change order would increase the project to $1,686,541.41. The construction work could not be delayed, and the work was completed during July. I'm the head of the chair. Could you come follow the cameras? And obviously, if anyone has any questions, please change on the chair.
Well, we anticipated rock under the creek at Wolfberry. Didn't know how much. There was no way to test drill for it because it was under the creek bed, and that's why there was a price set up for it. And of course, we got about, it's roughly in the middle of the project. We got pipe on both sides. So, I mean, we had to do it, and of course, out in that area, now that's goat rock. And there's a reason we got three rock boys in this county is the rock. Now, we... We were there to monitor, to make sure, and when I say night and day, so there was a couple nights we left about there at 11, 12 o'clock when they were drilling. So, we know that we did not pay for rock that we didn't encounter. This is just, you know, the nature of the beast when you're working out there around the river.
So, the part of the bid was rock under the creek?
Yes, ma'am.
And there was, I'm sure, there was.
Yes, ma'am. I've got, I made some copies of the bid if y'all want to see it. But, uh, I was in here early this evening, and when a couple of commissioners came in, I gave them to them, but, uh, and then I highlighted it. We had it set up in there right there at the bottom, in case, you know, we did run into it. We knew what it was gonna cost. We just didn't know how many linear foot we was gonna have.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for you?
So, there was $473,000 put in the fourth rock. Am I reading that correctly or not? Walk me across there.
They were, we were set up at alternate bid. We had it up top at $149 a foot. And...
But if there was rock, then it was $476.
If there was rock, we knew it could be $576, uh, going straight across. So, it was one of them deals where, you know, if it wasn't a, it wasn't a change order where somebody just comes up with work and they basically named their own price. They had to name the price going in in the, in the bid, and...
So, the amount of linear bid of rock was more than was anticipated?
Yes, ma'am.
But we knew what we paid?
We knew what it was gonna cost us. When we hit the rock, we just didn't know how much we was gonna hit.
I appreciate y'all hanging out. We heard in the morning or late at night, keeping an eye on everything and making sure.
Well, we knew, and we didn't have any doubts about the contractor, but to make sure we were getting what we paid for, that's what we did.
Well, as you said, if you're digging, you're hitting rock.
And then that's, especially out there around that river. And, uh, the EPD made us be five foot below the bottom of the creek, and the water was 11 foot deep there. So, from the bridge to the pipeline is literally fifty-five foot. So, I mean...
It was good to get in foresight, foresight to go ahead and have a price in place.
We knew we were gonna hit it. We got one more of these bores. It's a short bore on the wet area right at the county line, or right at the end of the water main down there. And this is a short one, and, um, I think it's like a hundred-foot bore. So, there's no way we can run into something like this, but, uh... We gotta do it to complete the project, and that's why we set the price up to know what it was so it wouldn't be an unknown.
Any, any things for you? Thank you, Jim. Is there a motion?
A motion to accept the change order.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay. No other questions, no other discussion? All right, all those in favor, I'll be executing the change order. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. County Manager.
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, we're going to go to item number nine. Number eight's gonna be postponed until after, uh, number 12. So, number nine, bill award for mowers for the prison, airport, and recreation department. In the budget was included five commercial zero-term mowers, um, for prison. One for prison, one for airport, and three for recreation to replace existing mowers. And the budget was $33,400 placed in there. Um, when the mowers came in, we did receive about... Seven?
Yep.
Seven bids. You can see the per unit price was $6,350, all the way up to $10,399.20. Various makes and models. So, Anthony's Lawn Mower Repair at West Point was a little bitter in the matter of $6,350 per unit for a total of $31,750 for all five mowers. If approved, the mowers will be available in seven business days. Um, and the staffer, we already have those. So, that, those mowers will become standardized equipment throughout the county. So, staff recommends approval of this bill award, and it is within budget.
Do you want to have any questions? The three for red, where are they going to be?
Two for pay and one for mow tree. No, yeah, two for mow tree, one for pay.
Okay.
Two for mow tree, one for pay.
And that $6,000 mower is heavy-duty enough for what we need?
Yes, yes. And we have had these models before, and they are working quite well, according to fleet management.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Anthony's Lawn Mower Repair bid for the five mowers.
Okay, and then a second there. All those in favor? Okay.
And then, Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, number 10, project updates. Again, hitting the high points of the items contained in the approved budget. Uh, number two, replacement county-wide email system. We're preparing bitspecs on that, uh, equipment. Along with the replacement telephone system, those bitspecs are being prepared. Just going right down the list. Number 13, restrip 16 county roads. The pre-bid meeting was August the 5th. Bid deadline is August 13th. That will be on the next commission meeting for consideration. Number 14, pit drive. We're having groundaway issues with that. So, that is kind of on the back burner for now. Number 22, chip and grind collected storm debris at Ellosy Park. That project started last, last week. So, that project is on, is proceeding, and should be finished in late October. Number 24, the new soccer pavilion at the soccer complex. Demolition's complete, and we're obtaining permits and ordering building materials. That project should be completed by the end of the year. Number 26, rails to trails. There's many doubters about that, but construction has begun. Up in Pine Mountain, beginning at Chipley to, um, the intersection of 18 at the Corners Door. There's bulldozers up there, um, um, all kind of manpower, equipment, and that project started on August 1st. So, that project is going, going very well so far. It almost started on August 1st. So, so far, so good on rails to trails. Phase one flooded by key, uh, federal transportation dance for grass. Number 28, airport fence project. That's going along real well. About 50% of that project has been completed. Number 36, the water meter replacement project, East and Chiefa loans. That's project is about 35% completed. That's probably just the highlights of the 46 items. Interestingly, on the collection figures, we do have all of the, um, collection figures for lost and sploss for the fiscal year. The sploss collections were above budget. The lost collections were seven, over at 7% above budget. And building permits, then we're starting the fiscal year with 26 building permits in July. So, 26 permits in July, um, which is what a foreshadow a hopefully great year.
Ju- July issue?
Correct, July of 2019. We just got that information in yesterday. So, we're starting off the fiscal year very busy in community development. And interestingly, the summer waste tonnage chart, we got those numbers in, um, yesterday. The July numbers are 1,459 tons. 1,459 tons with point 22. Uh, if, as you can see, at 1,459 tons, that dwarfs all the other numbers, um, along that category. So, if you take that number times the 12 months, we're gonna, if it, if it keeps going like it does, we're gonna go from 15,000 times in 2018, 19, that fiscal year, to 17,508 times this fiscal year if the trend continues. So, garbage is getting to be a big, big deal in its collection and its disposal. So, be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
On the garbage, uh, our tonnage increasing, um, is that gonna be easy for, as far as our capacity goes? Can our facility handle that expected growth this year? I mean, are we gonna have to look at a larger facility or...
I think the facility itself can handle it. Um, what's, what is stretching is the, uh, the routes and the garbage trucks themselves and the manpower. That's why we have the budget, a new garbage truck, a new driver, which equates to a new route. So, we, we knew, we saw this coming, and we budget accordingly for that in this year's budget. Facilities are in good shape. We're collecting more tonnage on the routes, but we're also collecting more tonnage as people bring it in and companies bring it in. We don't have to touch it except for, uh, a lot of people coming to the collection sites and the trasher station and giving us their, their garbage. So, it's, it's both sides. So, facilities are good. Manpower's pretty good. Trucks, well, we order a truck. It takes six months to get here. Um, but we're holding our own.
Any other questions on rainy updates?
I guess on, uh, Melly Lakes, we're still waiting on the state for a summary.
We have submitted all the documents to Melly Lakes for option eight. We're waiting for them to respond back to us to approve it. And once they approve it, then we're gonna begin construction documents. But our consultants keep saying, you know, there's a bunch of counties and cities in the same boat we're in. And so, I bet you they're inundated with plans and with the state. They go as fast as the state can go.
So, there's no expected timeline or something?
No, no.
Anything else? Mr. Teller?
Yes, ma'am. I have two items. Uh, the first one's number 11. It's a resolution to accept Maple Lakes Drive and Maple Lakes Court Act and Maple Lakes Southern Meeting. Uh, under your ordinance for the acceptance of new roads, uh, there, uh, we, the ordinance was, we drew the ordinance to require, uh, three, three things in order for you to be able to accept the road. One was a right-of-way deed, uh, which, uh, has to be transferred to you in, uh, into the name of the county, and you have to accept that transfer in order to complete the deed. And that's, that's a legal requirement. If not, it is, uh, prepare the deed, it has to be transferred and has to be accepted. Uh, but there, in the, in your packet, there is a deed from Edgar Houston Builders, uh, builder Inc. for, um, these two, uh, these two roads shown on the plaque. The second thing your ordinance requires is that, uh, a bond be posted, uh, to, uh, for the paving of the road. The road has to be paved, you know, for, for you to accept it. Otherwise, you'd be out paving all, all kinds of southern bidding roads. So, the bond has been posted. Uh, Southern State Banks is the, uh, is the surety on, on, on the bond. Uh, and I understand that Mike has gone out and looked at it and is satisfied with the construction of the road is, is appropriate. Uh, the third thing that, uh, is, uh, is required is a, uh, a, uh, a title insurance policy. That keeps you from having to expend money to go out and check the title to make sure you've got a good title of the property. Uh, and this is, uh, here you have a commitment from Chicago Title, which is a major title insurance company, uh, ensuring that Edgar Houston Builders has the property now and that upon the, uh, transfer of the property to, to you, that the, uh, uh, Chicago Title will issue a title insurance policy, ensuring the title to the land upon which the road is constructed. Uh, and so, this, uh, appears to comply completely and totally with all of your, uh, all of your requirements, and I recommend that you, uh, accept the deed to, uh, Melly Lakes Drive, Melly Lakes Court, uh, and, uh, and, uh, make those two, uh, those two thoroughfare county roads.
All right, this Maple Lake, Maple...
Maple, what did I say?
Melly Lakes.
Melly Lakes.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll say.
It's, that is a nightmare. So, I, if it comes to me, I can't funny.
Long gone ass, these roads aren't over a damn.
No. They're not over a damn.
They'll stick legs.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve for Maple Lakes.
And a second. All those in favor? All right, most of the, motion carries.
Can I say something? After a very long and wet winter, and in a very trying, uh, town of the year to build roads, that the, every department in Harris County was very helpful and understanding to work with us on, uh, finishing. And I know it, it, a lot of it, it, they had to go above and beyond normal because of the wetness, and it was, uh, difficult. But we finally got through with it. And I want to thank everybody, every head and, and all the people that worked on the farm. They were excellent.
Thank you for that. We'll let you stand up and say that any time. Thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Teller?
Well, yes, ma'am. There is a, another, uh, deed item number 13 is a limited warranty deed for 12.833 acres out of the Northwest Harris Business Park. This is a, uh, a limited warranty deed, meaning it, uh, we convey the property to originally to express, uh, holdings, and then they are conveying it back. I think this is one of the first businesses we had out there as a concrete business. And they are, they're, they're dealing it back to us, and they're making a donation of the property. And you will, uh, accept this, by accepting this deed, you will be, uh, accepting their donation of the property. And the donation, the, the appraisal value is what, $467,000, something like that. Uh, and so, you will get the property back free and clear of all liens, have to pay nothing for it, and then it becomes part of your, uh, your inventory in the Northwest Harris Business Park. And I recommend that you accept the, uh, the donation of this, uh, property and accept the limited warranty deed and transfer the title to the county.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will make the motion that we accept this problem.
Second.
And there is a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All of those in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, there is, I'd need to go into executive session, but I don't think we're gonna, you know, we may just want to wait a minute or two and have the zoning stuff now, then go into executive session afterwards.
And we still have number eight to address.
Correct. Thank you, Nate. Two minutes.
You just wanted to talk fast.
Not that fast.
Okay. All right, I will explain the procedures. We'll have the, um, call to order of the public hearing, read the application. We'll have the presentation by the applicant. There will be comments in favor and comments in opposition, if any. Uh, we will have the applicant sign if necessary. We'll close the hearing, and then we will have the action on the application. Our, um, we will, we will open the, the first public hearing, and the application is for Neil Block from Backwater Plaza LLC. His address is Hill Box 4 Canadian in Fort San Georgia. Uh, the name of the property owner is Richard Desports. His address is 5811 World Place, Columbus, Georgia. The address of the property to be rezoned is 1.19 acres. And it is behind the, um, 5175 Georgia Highway 219, which is the strip law there. The present zoning district is A1. The requested is C4. The present zoning district is A1, the requested is C4. There is currently no use of the property, and the proposed use of the property will be for deceptive drainage field for adjacent commercial mini home. So, Mr. Block?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to come forward? Can you give us your name and address for the break?
Neil Block, Post Office Block's okay. Post Office Block, 1480 Fortson, 31808.
Okay, and if you can give us just a brief idea of how you want to use this?
You'd like it very well. The businesses in the facility have grown significantly as well as the fact that the health department has made some changes in their requirements that have significantly increased the requirements for the drainage field size and circumstance. When this facility was built 20 years ago, 600 linear feet of drain line was sufficient for the facility. Now we're in the area of engineering, something in the neighborhood of almost 2,000 feet. So the requirements have significantly increased. There's no room on the existing facility to put that kind of infrastructure in, and so it's adjacent land that we have to look to. And it's taken us three years to get this piece of property. So we're very anxious to have your firm to vote on it, and we'll get started with new fields as soon as we get the health department to agree upon the engineering that's involved.
Are there, is there anyone who would like to make comments in favor of this rezound? Yeah, I know you do.
Add a little Martha to that.
Is there anyone who would like to make comments in opposition? Okay, there being none? Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Hopefully you'll acquiesce and we will make Harris County proud with the foresting business over there.
All right. We've closed the public hearing, and I will entertain the motion. I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Can I make a motion?
No, you can't. I'll make the motion that we're going to sign. And there's a second motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion is approved.
Breaks are on the table.
There were, there is a second application of Jim and Abby Duncan to rezound 244 acres of land from C3 Never Marshall to C4 Highway Commercial, and that has been withdrawn. The application has been withdrawn, and we will need to accept that withdrawal. Is there a motion?
Somebody accept withdrawal.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries. There also was an application of Benjamin Q. Johnson to amend the text of the zoning ordinance related to the story of certain vehicles and equipment, and as of this afternoon, he has also withdrawn that application. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Second. All right, it's motion second, all those in favor? And we will go back to item number eight after executive session. Is there anything else? Ready to say?
It's for executive session, yes, ma'am. We need to go with the real person, real property personnel and pending threatening or potential like that.
Okay, is there a motion during the executive session?
No.
All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Open the executive session.